Spinning.
We have a quorum has been determined and at six p.m. on Tuesday, August twenty, this council meeting will come to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic which stands on its own accord indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ooh, y'all sound good. Tonight, we want to welcome Pastor Jeffrey Bradley from White House Baptist Church. Thank you so much for being with us tonight and thank you for leading our invitation.
May it spread. Most gracious and wonderful God in thy name. For your kindness in your word that we are to always lift up our leaders and those in the board that we might live peacefully in this place. Father, I lift these leaders up to you now. I pray, Father, with wisdom beyond all time, Father, that they help us through our troubles and trials and through everything else that goes on in South Congaree. Father, I pray you give them the wisdom to leave this place in a way that's pleasing to you. These things we pray exist.
And thank you so much. Council has received the minutes from our July twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-four special call meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I make a motion if we approve the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you. Are, is there any discussion or corrections to the minutes? Here are none, I'll call for the question by roll call vote, Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember McIver?
I was present.
I'm just myself.
Councilmember Prosser?
Yes.
May I approach him, Spires?
Yes.
And I vote yes. My gracious. Next on our agenda is the committee reports and tonight we have with us Mr. Wally Tangle, who is our chairman of the planning commission and he is here to present. Good seeing you.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. I'd like to first thank the planning commission members, current and past, and spend all these hours putting this together. The council and government did a wonderful job putting this together, of course. Council, I already received everything we've submitted to. Yeah, we submitted to council and government so far. We had a couple of questions on the future use map. Our August sixth meeting, we reviewed that, took some notes, which I got yesterday. John's been out of town for a while. August eighth, then I talked with Gregory Sprouse and Phil Lindert, who's created the plan to go over a couple of questions they had. Let's just clarify some of the things that we submitted to them. I submitted the map notes to council and government this morning, earlier today. I hope to have the next copy of the comprehensive plan for our next meeting in September until we review it and get it submitted to council. That's about all I've got unless you have some questions.
Any questions?
Do you have a digital draft of that document? Of the document, of the plan that you put together?
The comprehensive plan.
The comprehensive plan.
We just sent them the notes, they're putting the comprehensive plan together.
But do you have a digital that you could send us that we could review?
I have it, but it's something you already have seen. The only, the only comprehensive.
I have seen, I remember seeing the copy.
So we all sent our, because I was on that part of that endeavor, we all sent notes in to, for it, so you would just be getting the original reports in it. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, definitely, just to know.
What she has wanted. The original one we started with, Wally.
The original comprehensive plan draft?
Right.
Everybody got that.
When did we get it? So I can go look for it.
It's not a year ago.
Okay, I'll look for it, I'll look for it in emails.
It's kind of a process.
But since the management and council and government is pretty much together.
Right, I understand that, I just wanted to see some of the things that they put in there before we actually see the opportunity to look at it and.
I can, I can send out another copy, I have it.
Okay, that's right, I'll just, if it's already been sent out, look for it and see, I just did not recognize.
Let me know if you need it, I have a copy.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Wally.
Anything else? Sure. We're good?
Yes, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, everyone has reviewed the, I'll receive a copy of the hospitality tax packet for review and discussion. The floor is open for discussion.
Have we decided if we're having a meeting, like we're gonna invite all our business owners here and go over everyone?
Yeah, we talked about doing it, but we hadn't scheduled it, so I had a question, is that what y'all want to do? Y'all want to go ahead and schedule that tonight or do you want to look at your calendars and let's get a date together? Yeah, but we're gonna have a meeting and bring them in.
So if they had questions, I'll, I'll, I'll get it, rather than going to business to business. If we go business to business, you don't, you get the gatekeeper sometimes, but you don't get the business owner or the person that's going to be in charge of this. So I'm thinking if we give them an opportunity, maybe two different dates or times or something, that might be. Yeah, make sure we talk in our mic because when I listen to the recording, you couldn't hear us.
May I make a suggestion to Ms. Charlton, the chief contact, Naomi Reed, and get several dates that she would be available to come lead that meeting? At that meeting, we can make sure that this is understandable to the businesses, this document. Is that your question, Mayor?
Did I have a question?
No.
Well, you have a question, the only question was that we do have a meeting and he brings them in.
Right.
That will be our Q and A meeting that we'll talk about.
But this is really cute.
Yeah, pretty much, and we can get some people, some other folks to look at it that have already rolled that out of their municipalities.
That'd be a good idea.
Just kind of review it, somebody more experienced.
That'd be good, that's good, thank you.
Next on our agenda is the County of Lexington Roads and Storm Drainage Agreement and tonight we have with us Lexington County Administrator, Mr. Todd Cullen, Mr. Lynn Sturkey, and we've also got our councilman, Lexington County Councilman Todd Cullen here tonight. You guys come on up so everybody can see you. Talk to us, so I've invited you guys here tonight in case anybody had any questions. I did forward the agreement out to everybody, so it's pretty much the same agreement. I'm just gonna turn that over to you so you can tell everybody what you told me.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Lynn Sturkey, County Administrator for the county of Lexington, joined with, by Councilman Cullen, somewhere, right there. Councilman Cullen's here tonight. As you know, we've gone through a process, there was an agreement placed with all fourteen municipalities where the county of Lexington would maintain the roads for subdivisions if the roads were built for our standards and so forth. We had gone through some iterations for them to actually cancel and so forth. And with the help of Councilman Cullen, taking it back to county council, we've extended with council approval to the town of South Congaree that if you, going back to the original agreement, same wording and everything, we just changed the dates and signed it and that agreement, the original agreement will be back in force. So I've shared with the mayor, she has it, we can certainly answer any questions that you may have about it or anything else.
This is the original agreement.
It's the original agreement, if you vote on whatever sort of your process is, send it back to me. I will, I'll have our chairman sign off on it and fix that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Cullen, you have any words of wisdom or any insight on this? How about you give us an update on Rammon Road?
We should have known that was coming.
That's all right, good evening, Council, and good evening, folks here in South Congaree. Any words of wisdom is if you were happy with what we had before, before the council, I guess was trying to work through a different agreement, we circled back and ended up like we were starting. So in reality, nothing has changed. The only thing that's gonna change is the inception dates and the opening agreement. It will be as long as you want it to be and as long as we want it to be. Again, I think it still hopes for a thirty day notice for any termination on either part, so. In front of the discussions, as we continue to work through public road maintenance, I'm not even sure why we have an agreement, but we have one, we've had one for a long, long time. So we feel like it's like best that we do have the agreement, which may end up in the future, that all public roads are gonna be treated all the same, whether they're can maintain, safe maintain, or missing. Words of wisdom is that as your representative, I would encourage you, if you see fit, to agree to a vision agreement, which we have. As far as Rammon Road update, I'm not certain exactly what update we're looking for. You know, we proposed to have improvements on Rammon Road. If the sales tax penny, the capital penny was passed, there was a plan for Rammon Road to be improved with sidewalks resurfacing. If we're speaking about the resurfacing of Rammon Road from Flat Springs back to three oh two, I don't know exactly where it is on the resurfacing list. I know that the DOT is closing out a resurfacing package within the next few months. So it may be in the next phase, but I will certainly find out and communicate with you and the councils. There are a few that I'm aware of that they're nowhere, that they might be structured now, but I've never looked. But again, the resurfacing, is that, is that what we're seeking?
Yeah.
Yes. I'm not aware of.
Really? Because they called me and said that they were gonna be resurfacing all around from Flat Springs all the way to three oh two.
That is the plan, but as to when, I'm not aware of.
I was told it would be finished by the end of November, but it looks like, I don't know, that's what I was told.
I will, I will certainly follow up with staff and get back to you, Mayor.
Okay, because they, I mean, they contacted me and told me that, that's why I thought you might know that too.
The signage is up. The signage is up.
Oh, they want to get the construction side again, well, great.
They also advised that it would not be the same construction crew that did Chapel Road.
Okay, great, so again, being inside the town, that may make sense that they're communicating directly with you and not through us because we typically all have to be involved in that. We stand ready to assist you, absolutely, we know that.
I saw you announce.
I know, they'd always tell me everything, so, yeah, we'll be right about that.
Any questions? Thank you so much for being here.
Pleasant to be here, pleasant to be here.
We have a question from our esteemed audience.
Is it my understanding that Rammon Road's gonna be resurfaced entirety?
From Flat Springs Road to three oh two, that's what I was told.
Well, what about the rest of it here?
Well, I'm not sure about from three oh two to the nine ridge drive. I do know they're gonna also do, starting at Dishatree all the way to, what's that, three twenty-one.
So what we're doing, we're leaving the gap here?
Well, I don't, I, you know what?
Is that, that's not included?
I don't know, it may be, it may be.
Mayor, I'll tell you what.
I can't confirm or deny, I don't know.
I will follow up with the plan of the entirety and send it to the mayor.
We'll, we'll confirm that for you.
Okay.
Because I'd seen something that it was all the way and then the conversation had been that it was just a three oh two, so.
But listen, I can be wrong, I've been wrong many times, so.
You are.
I'm saying, I don't know.
Rest assured, that was the understanding the last time I looked was, was three oh two, that's why I clarified that. Three oh two, Flat Springs, what I've all done, I've, even when we were doing the penny list, providing it for the, for the capital penny, I'm not even sure that it came from the school. So that was my recollection, but we'll, we'll follow up for sure. And what we send you will be what the DOT is providing us. Again, we, we don't put that list together, they do. They do ask us to confirm that we agree with that list because we have changed in the past where we would think, well, we appreciate you doing this, but however, we feel like this road, this mileage on this road is more beneficial than the mileage on a road that you present. So they do give us a little bit of flexibility to change that, but they're the ones that actually did it and they, of course, we fund it, but they did it.
Is that basically done on traffic count? Or do you know?
There's a couple of different types of criteria, condition is primarily the first. There are some traffic counts that are used in their valuation, but that's not the only one.
Okay, I was just wondering, there's a huge traffic count and it's increased on this end as well. I mean, I, I know it's the other side as well.
Well, typically, schools always try to get a lot of attention in maintenance, so it, it may very well come past three oh two, but that's the last I saw on the paper.
Thank you for, thank you for your comments and thank you, Mr. Sturkey, for.
Anything else, Mayor?
For that information.
We'll get it, thank you, great.
So that being said, do I hear a motion to approve the County of Lexington Roads and Storm Drainage Agreement?
I'll make a motion that works. So this agreement.
Is there a second?
One second.
Is there any discussion or corrections to the minutes? Are there any discussion for the, any more discussion, I should say, in regards to this agreement? Then I will call for the question, a roll call vote, Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember McIver?
Yes.
Councilmember Prosser?
Yes.
Mayor Prosser, Spires?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries. I'm gonna go ahead and sign that and maybe issue witnesses. And Ms. Charlton, if we can just hand that to you, would you mind getting that to them?
Sure.
Well, we'll need to see it.
Okay.
Freeze, I signed it wrong, so we'll have to, well, sorry, guys, but then we.
Sorry.
Okay, I signed the wrong line, so no worries, we'll, we'll get it to them. Next on our agenda, we have a second and final reading tonight for the Lexington County Animal Control Ordinance two zero two four dash zero two dash B and animal ordinance adopting as amended. Do I hear a motion to approve the second and final reading to adopt the County of Lexington's Animal Ordinance, Control Ordinance?
I make a motion to hear the final reading.
So we have a motion to approve the second and final reading. Is there a second?
I make a second.
Is there any discussion?
Want to hear the final reading or make?
So the motion was to approve the second and final reading and we have a second and there being no discussion, we'll call for the question, Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember McIver?
Yes.
Councilmember Prosser?
Yes.
Mayor Prosser, Spires?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried. Next on our agenda are our departmental reports and so we will now hear from our air and police chief, Mike Gordon, and Major Jones.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hope you're doing well. This report has attached to your documents from July first forward to present till last week. And as you know, it's two man department. Since that time, we've had twenty traffic tickets issued. Second page is misdemeanor paper arrest, seventeen, seventeen arrests. Third page is your demographics. If you have questions, you may. The rest of it is outstanding warrants or warrants that we have obtained. Some have been resolved, some are still people we're looking for. Variety, an entire variety of charges. And there's a lot of names on there.
Can I ask a question? Does this include any calls that the county took or is this just all?
This is, this is all of our calls.
Just, but I meant within our discipline. This is only calls you took while you were on duty?
That's correct, and those are calls that after hours, at the beginning of my shift, I would then research the after hour calls and contact those, those candidates who took the calls and I would advise them that I'm adopting those calls and I would then receive report, transfer and then begin my destination and then I would alleviate them of having further destination, a little more taxiation with what they're already over.
Okay, great, thank you.
There are calls where that's not necessary, but it was called, they were part of the destination.
And so what was the number of calls total?
For the two month period?
Yes, sir.
Say twenty.
Traffic ticket for twenty. Seventeen arrests, misdemeanor arrests. I don't have the number of total calls for the two months. Earlier in previous meetings, we reported the calls for twenty twenty-four and we were at hundred and thirty-nine. Do you remember what page number we were at?
Presently, we're at case number one two thousand and two thousand and today.
Hundred, hundred fifty-two, that would be for the year.
Fifty-two for the year.
For the year.
For this whole year?
This, no, it's calendar year.
Calendar year?
January first.
So in your, y'all's professional opinion, is that low or is that, what do y'all, I mean?
That's low.
I feel like when Josh reported, it was like a hundred and something a month. Would that be a combination of traffic? I mean, I don't, I don't know exactly what I'm.
Yeah, that was a court, that was a court.
Okay, that was a court.
Court, court cases and we do have, we've caught way up on the court cases. We do have a court next week.
We do, on next Wednesday.
And the, the court document that's on.
Councils. Just, just to add that, add that number, super council, Mayor, in two thousand point three, at the end of, end of the calendar year, our department had four, twenty-four documented incident, documented incidents, I guess, reports. As of December twenty-two thousand and twenty-three.
And we're, we're one, one number now?
One fifty-two.
Yeah, one fifty-two.
Wow, that's awesome.
And a lot of that was from the code violations that diluted our mobile home parks in there.
What is that progress, what is that progress on the homeless situation? We know, are we seeing a lot of vagrants? I mean, I've seen a lot of people walking up and down the streets with backpacks.
Yes, we are, there's a, they're still out there, unfortunately, homelessness is a crime and we try to keep them moving. We have had recharged for violating our vagrancy violations. We've been, we've responded to the Fresnesia's Kidney Center several times for things such as going inside and locking themselves or barricading themselves in the bathroom so that they can wash in their sink, take a jailhouse bath, if you want to call it that. Or, or, so we have taken a couple of people out of there. We have Major Jones arrested, one at their house pizza, not too long ago. Pretty much a daily occurrence, different locations, it's not just one location. Any questions from Mayor, Major Jones, step up to the microphone.
Thank you very much.
Having briefly had a, having briefly had an opportunity to certainly get to, get acclimated with our new building supervisor, Ronnie Hamilton, who obviously is very knowledgeable in his experience and everything and getting to, having opportunities to get him more familiar with the areas that we're having certainly, I guess, problems with everything, in the backlash of the residual of the closing down of older mobile homes, everything, and some of the lap dead properties, anything like that. And so he's done a really great job of identifying the areas that are, that are, that are referred to as compounds and just, just hazards for, for the homeless and some of the areas that are more problematic, everything like that, we keep constantly having problems with, with the, with the, with the knock applies of the, the excessive code enforcement violations, et cetera. And so he's had a really great job, as he and I spoke passing, you know, sitting down with, with the computers and everything, with what he's doing out, sending out the almost, almost nonstop, you know, proper noticing of certified metals and so forth. So he's collectively, and he has collated, you know, a very extensive list and everything, which obviously was already sent out to Mayor, Council, and one of it. So I took the liberty to go ahead and just transpose that to Microsoft Word and just go highlights and areas, everything like that. And so there has been a very reasonable amount of compliance that I, that he and I have spoken about. And we, with, with the time he's, that he's, yeah, he's certainly invested into the, into, sort of, with his, with his force, that's all, the notification, everything like that, he's making very amazing progress and everything. And, and so he, he's already received a lot of positive feedback and everything. He spoke briefly with me about reaching out and I believe in your package, about the banking grants, everything like that. I took the liberty, having on occasion, I do have the opportunity to reach out to Department of Public Safety and the National Association and other areas and everything, support, support agency, and groups throughout the state who provide matching grants, hundred percent grants, secondary splits and thereabouts, that deal with town communication grants throughout the entire state, everything like that. It's just, it's just in the initial contact right now. Having spoken to Ronnie about this, I thought I'd go forward. Somebody's hyping up, we can sit down next week and get in process with, with source specific grants, everything like that, to try to work with them about adopting some of these and just, just parallel research and reaching out to those contacts to cultivate, you know, maybe a accelerated approval of some of these banking properties because there are some properties that, that are in serious lactation, it needs to be certain address, everything like that. And as we get more out sort of for that to Ronnie and having address that, you know, obviously directed to council, it would be perfect. But yes, I have to answer the other questions, Gavin.
Any government enforcement questions or any other questions for Major Jones?
How often are you in contact with one? Weekly, probably three to four hours at a time, definitely, you're like, very consistent. We, we try to be a secure support team of the best and everything. We, we, we enjoy his knowledge of, of many years with the city of Columbia, so I'm taking advantage of that, you know, that documented experience that he has. But yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next on our agenda, citizens' comments. Has anyone signed up tonight, Ms. Charlton?
We do have a party, yes.
Okay, um, let's just remember, can someone help me keep the timer so that we're keeping a timer? I think it's three minutes, so we'll make sure everybody stays within that three minute. Do you want to call them up?
I can't read all of the names. Looks like initials B V.
Good afternoon, Council, good afternoon, citizens of South Congaree. Most of you people up here love me, I know most of you. I've been a resident of this town for sixty-six and a half years. I was born and raised right here on this piece of property, we've been saying, I live down here, one sixty-three West Bear Road. Born and raised at Rammon Road, thirteen thirty. Born and raised at Ramon Road, thirteen thirty-three by two parents. Allison and Smatton, which, by the way, started a business down here in nineteen forty-nine. And in fifty-two, a guitar come in and it was called Vinegar Island Garage. I've got two older brothers, they worked through it, I worked through it. And when I was forty-two years old, my dad retired in eighty-five. I took over his part of the business and run it to Two South. Then when that, when Uncle Tar retired, can I think it was ninety-eight or ninety-nine, I left and went to the County of Lexington. There I was a first class line mechanic and I worked on all the first responder vehicles, fire, EMS, sheriff department, uh, all the other things that we got. During that time, uh, you made a lot of nice people and a lot of good things. And Mr. Gordon was one of them. I worked right along with him and the sheriff department through the years. My job entitled later on, that I put vehicles together. All these go fast trucks you see running down the road, B, and that gentleman, Ray, at collect, right there, put all, most all of them together for the camp. When I retired here in April of, of this year, two thousand twenty-four, you know these people, you have, I got myself on contact I can call the fire EMS, whatever. These people constituents I had to work with on a daily basis, know what they wanted done, whatever. Um, I asked a question before that. How many sheriff officers have we, have we done? The comment was made to me, thirty-eight. That was an eight. After coming to the meeting last Thursday night, Tuesday night, I got another flat file in the chair. Called some of these guys, which I contacted, and they up in the police department. And I asked them, I said, is it any better? Have we got any better? We got more people come in? And they kind of chuckled and laughed and said, this works now and it was when we left. We, we get three come in, two retired, we have to move on. Or we get two come in, three quit. So it's never been. And also they have added our S, SRO departments for all the schools. Half of them not even filled. There's new cars sitting in the parking lot, ready to roll. No, with no employee. First responders are on a decline. Fire, EMS, I just had a luncheon with Ryan Hood three weeks ago Thursday. He said they had a hundred and eighty paramedics graduated. They got two from the left county, Lexington County, two. I said, well, where did everybody go? He said, they're running for money. They're going for money. We're in an era of time where these people that are skilled laborers and skilled workers, they run for the money. I don't blame them. But that puts a bad burden on the county. The county's struggling right now. Mr. Lynn would've been here, if he was here, he would probably back me up on that. Because the people that we're getting, we've asked, you ever heard of scraping the bottom of the barrel? We moved the barrel over and dug around in the dirt to find people. I got people working on a million dollar fire truck, has, it's green on it, has no experienced spirit. His experience was, well, I worked with my granddaddy on it. I'm gonna put him on a million dollar, million dollar fire truck. Wow. No tools whatsoever. Good cat, good kid, he's trying, he's struggling, okay? That's where we have gotten. And the reason I'm bringing that to you is because I have, I come in here and told him, Mike, you listen to Jones, and I had a
Three minutes.
Conversation with him and said, what, in twenty-two years, have you ever been reprimanded? Have you ever been put punished or any kind of thing, uh, by the town? Nope. Is anybody on this council that's sitting here right now, was on council, when you come in here? He said, no, something's coming out. So he's out, he's out lived twenty-two years of personal agendas and personal prerogatives, whatever you want to call it. So that tells me, and plus asking, so what is your accreditation? You have all that, yep, gotta do the state, not the county, not the town, the state. So he's a licensed police. There's times when I needed him, he'd come running. I didn't need a shoe off, I needed pulled up at that time. Fix a big gun sight, going up, I'd be at my mom's at twelve thirty in the morning. Some cats trying to break in my mom's house, I come in my mom's house. My thing is this here, give the man an opportunity to prove his worth. He has been able to adjust to everybody here. And that says a lot. From a guy looking from outside, that tells me this guy can do the job. Give him a chance. If you don't, if you don't like him, fine. Yep, there's several of you sitting there, don't like me. I don't personally like you. So that's fine. Put that to the side. All I'm trying to say is if the man is qualified, don't, don't try any prover. A bird in hand is better than four in the book. Okay?
Thank you very much.
You got it, so don't lose it.
Thank you. We appreciate you. That's the part about no violence.
He said, don't like you.
No, people just like you. Next, I have Danny J. Welcome, mayor. Good to see you again.
Well, let me say, uh, keep going tonight, that, uh, I've been where you all are and I know it's a hot seat sometimes. And, uh, I've been wrestling spiritually all day long about how to say what I gotta say with my Lord and, uh, uh, how can we say hard things without, without hurting somebody? And I don't want to do that. But I have some things that I have to say. And, uh, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for everybody that's here and, uh, for the council. I appreciate you, admire you for what you're doing. But I've been asked by a group of citizens to have to start a discussion between the town council and residents regarding issues that have, that we have with this administration. We want to trade our silence for a loud voice. We want to trade our trust in this council to measure defiance if it comes to that. So we humbly ask the council to hear and address our concerns in this meeting tonight so we will never have to get into that chaos. Mayor, since you are the elected leader and the head of the council, I will address these concerns to you and ask that you speak to these, speak to our issues and then for all any of the council members that would like to address those as well. Also, mayor, I'd like to remind you of your campaign promise six years ago when you campaigned that your administration would be open, transparent, and accountable to the citizens regarding your leadership. Open means that, that there ain't, there isn't any closed doors that mark off limits in your administration. Transparent means it declares that there will be no hidden actions or motives. Accountability means your demands that you personally invite scrutiny from the people and that we measure your leadership and actions against the way your administration is serving us. We have eight questions that we would like answers to. And if our eight questions are satisfied by your answers, we can lay aside our concerns and go home in peace. If you or we citizens need to adjust our trajectory and compromise a way forward, I think it would be fine. And if we can find a way to do it, then we can still all go home in peace. However, if there isn't consensus tonight between the people and the mayor and the council, then this is only the beginning of our loud voices. And it shows how far the people are willing to go to be heard and to be represented. Before I read to you these eight questions, let me tell you how we got to this moment. The reason we are here at this moment of contention is because we don't think the mayor and the council understand that we want to be involved in the development and the process of creating a police department anew. We want to be involved. And we're going to build a wall around Major Jones at, with our citizens to show him, show you all, we support this man. He's our guy. We want him to be our police chief. He's the oldest tenured employee in the town. He has the experience, he knows a lot of people in it that live in the town. He knows every street. He knows where the problem areas are. He's the guy. And, uh, I want to see him protected. I would ask that he stay with us a year until we can work out the, uh, policy that fits our community. Not the job description is defined in the, in the handbook, but that the description dis, dis, describes what we citizens want to see in our police department. We don't want a police state. We want a good, friendly police department. And I think, uh, I can tell by, uh, gentleman's humility that, um, he, he can be that, that kind of person.
Three minutes. We appreciate you. Listen, if you would send that to us in an email and then that way we can all look at your questions and answer you.
We want to hear what.
We want to hear what it says.
We could have our three minutes.
Y'all know that.
Yeah, you could have our three minutes.
You can do that. According to Robert Shaw's order, and that's what our, our ordinance is.
We haven't done that in the past. You haven't done that in the past with other people. He deserves to be able to speak for us.
Okay.
He's speaking for the citizens.
We want to hear what he has to say.
Council, speak up.
You don't listen to your citizens?
Well, we can vote to give him extra time. And if everyone has three minutes and he chooses those questions on behalf of each person, there's no reason he shouldn't be extended. I mean, I, for one, want the accountability and I want you to ask questions to us.
We do have accountability, but we also have
Well, I'm in, I want to know.
We have to be courteous to everybody here as well as.
Mayor Jones, would you just give us the questions that you, I mean, are you hearing what I'm asking? Just ask us the questions so that the time can be allocated properly to everybody tonight? Cause I think there are other people that are signed up.
I understand what you're saying. I think this is important to the people of the town.
I agree.
I certainly plan to give you these, uh, these, uh, eight questions. But as, um, the councilwoman has said, it is in order to continue the, uh, my time.
Okay, so then we'll take the council, we'll take a vote. Um, uh, councilwoman Prosser, are you, um, I mean, what is the time limit we're going to get? I mean, we just can't leave an open ended timeframe. So, I mean, we're.
I'm finally going to be taking some more time, but to give everybody a chance so we're not here till about ten o'clock.
Sure, I'm saying that. I'm going to read fast. You don't have to answer them. You just have to hear them.
Okay, that's fine.
Then you can, then you can answer.
Well, if you'll please just read them so we can, you know, what I was asking you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number one, why have we had so many, so many of our employees turned over in the town clerk position? We have Pat Shaw, Sharon Williams, Tara Spires, Teresa, I don't have her last name, Kelly Clark, and now we have Carrie. Number two, why has the police chief, police officers, Walter Brooks, Garner Sharp, resource officers, uh, reserve officers, Kevin Miller, Gerald, and Wendy Wilson, all terminated their employment here in recent, uh, weeks and months? And, uh, we have an answer for this, but we would like to know what you have to say, the reason why all these people left. According to, number three, according to your special call meeting, you voted to submit a contract and earnest money on the purchase of property for the town. Will you explain to the town citizens what the plans are for these purchases? Where is the property located? Are you planning to build it? So what is this in the comprehensive plan for the town? What is the cost? Would we be tapping into sewer or would we have set the, um, tanks and need, would they need to be installed? It appears that you contracted with GMK on two different occasions for services. What were those costs and what, what services did we receive for, for the contracted town? Number four, does the council understand that the council's duty is to perform the will of the people? Do you understand the people of the town should be involved in decisions that are greater than just keeping the lights on? Number five, is there a town clerk and a clerk of court on site at the town hall to serve the people at least eight hours a day? I know you have a reason, but, uh, we also have, uh, found in our research other reasons. Number six, why was the workshop meeting changed to five thirty and the regular meeting changed to six o'clock when most of the people don't get off work early enough to come to the meetings? Number seven, would you please increase the volume of the town sound system for the citizens watching on social media? Why is the sound system and the video only working at selected meetings? Number eight, has the council discussed unincorporating the town of South Congaree? We have an answer to those questions, all of them from our research. And we'd like to present these questions to the council and have you give us answers to these eight questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is it Wayne Love or Wayne?
I'm good.
I have Judith Lawson.
Pass.
Miss Sylvia Drin.
I was going to give mine to Danny Jones if he needed it.
Miss Pat Shaw.
I was going to give mine to Danny.
Miss Debbie, is, is it Estes?
Uh, yes, uh, I promise my, uh, little question was very quick. Um, we were wondering, uh, who, uh, would be responsible for cleaning the storm drains in the street?
Will you come up and speak so it'll record up to the mic here?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right here, tell them who you are.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy to ask these. And I just wanted to ask, uh, what have you done about the storm drains on our street that you problem? There's no way you can be good at all for it. You can't be a worker in the system. Um, I personally try to keep my drain, the front of my house clean. Put those numbers on the street that are completely pockmarked. That was our only concern. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. We will see if we can get some help with that.
I have Steve Maxwell.
All right, and I just a few questions also, Steve Maxwell. Um, the other day I had a thing going on with some solicitors in town. Mr. Jones did a wonderful job, but getting a hold of Mr. Jones is a pain. It made you pain because you called here to transfer your Lexington County. Lexington County's audio was ninety percent distorted. I was on the phone with them for probably fifteen minutes trying to get each word repeated fifteen times what they were trying to say. I called the number back directly, so that's a Lexington County problem. Anyway, we need a way to get a hold of our officer, someone something that was on. Well, Lexington County says, well, we heard you, so if anything changes, call us back. What kind of response is that from Lexington County? Anyway, um, so we need a way to get a hold of him. Also, on the code enforcement officer, is there an option on the website? How can we get a hold of them? Because there's constant things to be done and since you can't get a hold of anybody. We, and, and some of the things I put this on our ordinance is, why do we have fireworks allowed at eleven P M. every single night of the year? Why? Would you want to be in front of your house every night at ten forty-five blowing off fireworks? That's your ordinance. Casey has one of the best I've ever seen, but the laugh is completely fanned. They only laugh twice, he did July fourth and New Year's Eve. And no answers from here, damn, I wouldn't get a hold of anybody either. Uh, and the last thing, uh, crash dance. Most places I've lived before have an ordinance with the things they have to go off the street in twenty-four hours. I see so many of them sitting out by the street twenty-four hours a day and it goes as, hey, we're in blow, we're empty void in the street, oh, there's traffic accidents. Um, I see a bunch of them blocking the mailbox. I need to be the mailman because they have to get out every single time they deliver mail from these crashes and stuff on the mailbox. So that's all I have for that.
Thank you so much.
All right. I'd like to answer your question on code enforcement.
Okay.
Cause while we have a lot of people in the town, there actually is a forum.
Okay.
And Carrie could even address this, but there's a forum and I'm asked her to put it in a more visible area because I've had people call me and say they can't find it.
On the website?
Yeah, and if you submit that, you can email it, bring it up here, whatever, then that helps her, that actually helps our code enforcement person versus taking a lot of phone calls and, you know, and you can do it anonymously if you want to do that as well.
All right, sounds good. Thanks.
I'd like to answer that too. So I just had, um, somebody ask me that very same question, say, how can I get something to the code enforcement, um, official? So his phone number, he said, is this is the town cell phone number, so write it down. Eight oh three, six hundred, five three, five one. His name is Ronnie Hingleton. His number is eight oh three, six hundred, five three, five one. He said, feel free to text him or email him at r hingleton@southcongaree.org.
Okay.
Mr. Maxwell, I said, I hope that you may use your app and get information.
All right.
Since it comes back on duty this, or later this week, your personal call.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate the good job the other day.
Next, I have Jeffrey Bradley.
Yeah, I just, I thought we were supposed to sign off.
Oh, no problem. Um, Mr., is it Eddie Effinger?
That's close enough.
Eddie Effinger. I was trying, I'm sorry.
Well, it's okay. That's a lot better than some others. Okay, I spoke of the last meeting, uh, in reference to the police chief and so forth. And I know that at one time, that I talked to Councilman Spires, I know at one time we had directives and information in our, in our, uh, ordinances referencing the police department and, and all the above. There's not a need to reinvent the wheel. But I do agree with what Andy Jones said, that y'all, y'all get it. So we input, uh, this is one opportunity, and I think the questions that he presented is another good opportunity. But I also, uh, took it upon myself, I went to the municipal association and, and looked up different municipalities that are looking for police chiefs. And so I have just three, three towns, by the way, in the state of South Carolina, my understanding, there was thirty police chiefs. there was thirty police chiefs positioned over there. So it's a problem. It's a problem getting good people to accept the job. It's a, it's a bad job. But anyway, I, I'm full of, what, Bishopville's asking for a police chief, Norway, and also Ridgefield, and I'll just give these to the council, I didn't make enough for all of them, but I'll just present them, and I ain't taking that day just.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate that. He's appreciating that. Anybody else? Michelle Mayberry, Michelle Mayberry?
Hey, good to see you.
Hey, Mayor of Castle. Michelle Mayberry, actually, she's in Grand River. Are y'all looking to hire police officers? Or, or their job postings? Yeah?
There's job postings for police officers.
All right. I posted on, where the police department on M A S D, and they weren't old arms, but they may have expired, so. I checked M A S D, and there's nothing out there where y'all are looking to hire officers. So I was just wondering. But I would like to say, I concur about Major Jonas. Our citizens respect him, and criminals and thugs fear him. So he's all we got. That's what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Mr. and Mrs. Sturkey.
We're good, here we go with the name of the.
Thank you. That's the end of the list?
Well, while I've got y'all here, I want to, because I know, you know, you might leave and not come back, but I wanted to, while you all are here, I want to tell you that we're gonna have a litter pickup on Saturday, August thirty-first, I'm gonna take time to say, hey, we would love to have you guys back on that Saturday morning. We're gonna meet here at nine A M to hand out our, all our garbage, paraphernalia, pickup, sticks, and bags, and gloves, and all that good stuff, so. August thirty-first, nine o'clock, town hall, y'all come back, we'd love to have you.
I did have just one quick question on Cheryl Sturkey, Grandland Road. Do we have an estimated time as to when there will be any responses to these eight questions?
We need to, I was just gonna ask, thank you, Cheryl, I appreciate that. I was gonna ask Mr. Mayor Danny Jones, it all was trying to come together, Danny, to get us that list exactly as you presented those questions, so that we can answer those questions exactly as you presented them. We can do that?
Sure will.
Okay, thank you. When can we get, when can we expect them?
I expect.
When, when can we get them?
Right now.
Well, I would email them.
Can you also email them?
I can see it since it's.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Nobody told me when I came in the door that I had to sign in. It's very, very brief. Do I need to come up, or?
If you want to speak, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Do you live in South Congaree?
I own property in South Congaree.
State your name and your address, please.
Rebecca Knobbs, three ninety Church Street. I just want, I wanted to reiterate some stuff that people said about the code enforcement officer. The phone number you just gave out was on a letter I received from him. I have called him seven times with three messages, last week and this week, and I have still not got a call from him. So just feedback for you guys, it's impossible to reach him and then have time to do what he's asking to get done, because he will not turn a phone call. That's all we got.
Thank you.
Did I say something?
Yes, ma'am. How can I tell you that? Why would I? I would agree with you, in reference to the garbage pickup. Okay, Jeff and I, of course, live on bridge, between the bridge and Dunbar Road. And in the past, we try to keep our property clean, and we have picked up from the bridge to the downside on both sides by ourselves many, many, many times, several years. But now, we noticed that your guy that cuts the grass cuts from the bridge up to Skyview, which is right before our house. He doesn't cut the rest of the wax to Dunbar. On the other side, he cuts all the wax. So what I'm saying is, we're out there taking our lives and our hands and our age, trying to keep that road clean, but y'all aren't allowing him to cut in front of our house all the way up to the side.
On your side of the road?
On our side.
Yeah, that's not part of the contract, because it's private, it's your property, so he's not going on people's.
How about the airport, they own that. See, Staley owns that.
Has he ever cut that side?
Yes, we always cut that side.
And the sheriff up on the far right is in.
Okay, well, we'll ask him about that.
I was told, but he was told not to cut on that side. And we have been picking up on both sides, like I said, in the lorry, he keeps busy up by the road, and he's like, keep moving, come by.
We'll ask him.
We'll, we'll work to make sure that those issues are covered.
And that is the right hand. So he can be tucking, not our problem, we keep our own property clean, so anybody knows the issue, so. So, you know, I agree with the garbage pickup, and we need to be doing that, but in the past, we've all had very little help with that, sometimes we never had help, and we're never clean like that. And another thing too is, you know, we want our entrance to the town to look nice. And now there's dirt in the road, there's grass growing in the road, there's grass on the sidewalks. Our town is looking really bad again, when you come down through.
I think there's been someone just contacting the D O T because of equipment issues.
Yeah.
Is what I was told, because I had that same issue, I think that. There's no reason for a stand to be collecting on sites of.
Grass growing in the road, you know, and, I mean, it was bad.
Yes, we're working together.
We want it to look nice down at town.
We do too, thank you.
And let me just say to y'all, thank y'all so much for coming out tonight and telling, giving, sharing your comments and your viewpoints. That's how we, that's how we know. We don't, if you come, if you don't come and you don't tell us, we don't know. But I will also encourage you, don't listen to rumors and what gossip. If you've got a question, and Mr. Jones, Mr. Mayor, we will definitely answer your questions, and we will provide you with answers, so that you can share it with everybody. If you want to know the truth, come and ask us, and we will tell you, I promise. Thank y'all so much for being here.
I've already spoken, but just one quick follow-up, I promise.
Next time, y'all need to bring supper and want to say.
I need to write stuff down, anyway. What are the expectations of hiring a town administrator?
Under discussion.
Okay, because it's gonna be imperative that you have a town administrator when you hire a police chief. Because the police chief can't work for five people. So the police chief works through the town administrator, the council works for the town administrator, okay? So that's gonna be imperative. I'd like for you to add to that, Drane's List, the four-way stop up here, that high ramp, it's terrible. It's, you can barely see through the pipe now. Okay, that's it, sorry.
Also, we have, I think we have a couple seats open on our planning commission. We have a couple seats open on our planning commission, if anyone wants to volunteer, and we've got our bits committee that's gonna start working on our Christmas, and I think they're working on something, we've got something in works due for next fall, so. Anybody, y'all, y'all, we need, we need help, we need volunteers, I mean, we're just five people, and we've just got a few people that have been volunteering to help with our Christmas stuff, so.
How do we get that information? Is it on the website?
Well, our new sign, actually, is gonna be put up on August the twenty-seventh, and so hopefully we'll have some information that you guys can see on that.
Okay.
And we'll have it on the website too, so.
And I know that when we originally made the grass contract, they weren't cutting. We're allowed, was talking a while ago, about both sides all the way to the town.
I do know for a fact that they are very careful about on the right side, where it's the really sharp curve there, where you can't see around. One of, I think it's a father and son, they almost got hit by a car that was flying through there. So it's very close to the road there, there's not much right away there with the overgrowth and all, but we will definitely tell them about it.
Okay, well, because it's a safety issue with residents, it's a safety issue, I think. Let them put up phones or what? And I'm not, I'm not down with grass, that's not, I'm not saying.
They do a great job.
But in reality, the property that Lois talked about, and we're talking about it, it's not the town's property, it's the state's property. We're cutting the state's rightways. You know, they should be cutting, and they're not doing it.
That's right.
You know, maybe we put some pressure on them. You know, I'm saying, we pay taxes, it's not our property, but we try to keep it clean.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good stuff, y'all, good stuff. Anybody else?
Yeah, I would gladly cut the grass if you guys would annex that into the town. The way you're gonna do it is call the airport while that land is up for sale, before it's sold, and get with the airport administrator.
We've already contacted them, and they said, why would we annex into the town of South Congaree?
No, I, I talked to them too, but you gotta take it to the next level. You gotta go to the, you gotta go to our congressman or senator, our representatives in Washington. That's federal property, but they can get it done, it can happen.
Well, we'll certainly ask them to help us with that, that this council's wish to do. Okay, you had said y'all had vacant positions on the planning commission, is that what you said? Yeah, we just had somebody resign off just recently. Who resigned?
Yes, Lakeley, our partner.
I'll be glad to serve on the planning commission. Anybody else? Okay, well, pursuant to South Carolina State Code, section thirty dash four dash seventy A one and two, I move the council into executive session for the stated reasons per the agenda, and also to invite Mr. Ted Luckington and our town attorney, John Moskowski, to join council in the executive session. Do I hear a second? We have a second, and I'll call for a question. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember McHyver?
Yes.
Councilmember Prosser?
Yes.
Mayor Prosser Spires?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Let the minutes reflect that we are entering into executive session at seven oh two P M. Thank y'all so much for being here. And we will try to hurry through our executive session.